Good evening, everybody. I am going to call to order the Dover School Committee meeting scheduled for May 18th at 6:15 via Zoom. I appreciate everybody that's jumped on. Before we begin and address community comments, I'm going to read, bear with me a little bit, but read a script that has to do with conducting meetings via Zoom. Good evening. This open meeting for the Dover School Committee is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order on March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of the public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. For this Dover School Committee meeting is being convened via Zoom, as posted on the Dover School website. Please note that the meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that many folks may be able to see you and that take care not to share your screen at your computer. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. For public comment, community comments are an opportunity for members of the community to be heard. We respectfully request that you make your comments brief, just a couple of minutes or so, and that you move the discussion forward by adding new information. Please try to avoid repeating points that have already been made. Community comments are an opportunity for us to listen to the members of the community. It's not for forum, for answering questions, or to engage in a debate. Once a public comment section of the meeting has been concluded, we will move on to other business and unsolicited comments from the community will no longer be permitted. This is a standard operating for the school committee meetings across our three school districts. We invite anyone to stay and listen to the rest of the meeting, but also understand that many of you, we also understand that many of you may be unable to do so. So feel free to drop off if needed. We appreciate that you've taken the time to participate in this important process and we encourage you to reach out to your school committee reps with any questions at any time. In terms of meeting etiquette, we are now turning to the first item of the agenda. But before we do so, permit me to cover a couple of ground rules for effective and clear ways to conduct business. I will introduce each item on the agenda. After a person presenting the item on the agenda is finished, I will ask to take questions from the school committee members. Please include what you would like to speak by clicking on, you know, raise your hand or just take yourself off mute on your computer and then I will reach out to you. Please remember to mute your phone or your computer when you're not speaking as there tends to be background noise. And please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps everyone understand what you're saying. For any responses, please wait for me to call on you so we're not speaking over ourselves. When we do voting, please, I will conduct it via roll call. So please unmute yourself as a group and then we'll call each individual by name. When you submit your vote, you need to repeat your name so it's on record and we can also take appropriate notes. And then after you've concluded your vote, please put yourself back on mute. Little formality, just to get that out of the way. Thank you. Our second item on the agenda are community comments. At this time, I was wondering if there's any one who you'd like to comment. You can raise your hand on the participation area. Or if you want to take yourself off mute, just identify yourself and I'll try to make sure we don't talk over ourselves. Anyone have any community comments? Okay, seeing none, hearing none. I don't see any on the participant. Do you, Don?
No.
All right, thank you. We will move on to our report section and the first one is from Ms. Dial.
Hey, good evening. Thank you very much. So nice to see you all. It's been a while. Since we, since we formally had a full school committee meeting, we've of course gone into remote learning. So lots of changes have happened since I, since I shared information. In the report, I mentioned some of the highlights of the changes we've made in Phase Three, including an increase in live conferences and increasing the amount of feedback and the, some of the structures we've put in place to allow that K to five. Whereas before it was formally in three to five in Google Classroom. So we've added Padlet. We're still using Seesaw. So a lot of the structural changes have been happening progressively over time. And I can't say enough about how our, our teachers have made really significant changes very rapidly and done, done an incredible job. And I'm also really thankful for the, the feedback we've had from parents. Deb Reinemann and I had a principal's community meeting last Thursday at noon and six and really appreciated that opportunity to, to talk with families and field questions and, and understand more about what families are experiencing during this time. Professional development continues. The school improvement plan is underway. We shared some of the, the highlights that we're planning. Two of the three goals we plan to roll forward for year two, which is really good practice and a way to make a lot of good progress. And the one that we would like to add in is structural changes and pedagogical changes for remote learning, which is at the forefront. We've learned so much already that we want to embed in our regular practice. In terms of curriculum and learning, we are piloting Lexia in many of the classrooms, which is a testament to the work that Priscilla Stepman, our literacy specialist this year, has done with teachers. They're very receptive to the work that she is doing. So we're really excited about the feedback on that so far. I shared with you the, the numbers for class sections. And I know Dr. Keough and Ms. Vittori have, have shared information on that as well. And we are, we are sharing some recommended changes to the family handbook, which was an attachment in the packet. So that's, that's an overview, a very quick overview. Do you have any questions for us?
Anyone, yes, Brooke, please ask questions.
Thank you, Laura. Thank you, Laura and Deb. And I see we have some educators here and I can't even imagine what you are all going through. I, it's hard enough for me to get through the day with just my students. So I just want to send our, our thanks and appreciation for all, all that you're doing in this really crazy time.
Thank you.
I had, I had a few questions. I don't know, is it better, Henry, do you want to go by section or do you want me to just flip through? What would be most appropriate? Henry?
I think Henry froze.
Am I frozen or is everybody else okay? All right, let me just ask you, in terms of the remote learning piece. So my understanding from your report is that there's four Zooms per week with the primary teacher and then possibly an additional with other educators?
Four, four live sessions per student. So in some of the classes, those might be small group, but each child has that opportunity for four contact points with educators. The, the general practice is at least three, if not all four, with the classroom teacher. We are also having our educational assistants work very closely with entire teams. But there's also the option in Phase Three, that just started at Phase Three, to have our EAs support some of that small group work especially.
Okay, so there's, but there's no scenario where a student would just have an EA for those three or four?
That's correct.
Okay. And then I notice also the, at least once a day, there's some kind of special?
Right.
Okay. And then Spanish, Monday through Thursday for every student?
For every student, right. So in, in the upper grades, the last two years, I believe it is, we moved, we, we kept the same number of minutes per week, 120 minutes. But instead of doing four times a week, we moved it to three times a week for longer periods. It cut down on the transitions and allowed teachers to do some more. So now that we're remote learning and not having to go just by class, we thought it best for streamlining inconsistency sake really to have it on the schedule for every student four days a week.
Right, okay. No, and I think that's certainly helped in terms of adding some sense of normalcy to, to the day.
I hope so.
Okay. I wanted to, let's see, a couple of things. The, the sixth grade transition, is it premature to be talking about any plans around, around that? I just know that it's been done in such a wonderful way in the past and that really kind of de-stresses and normalizes the whole process. And I, that is such a loss right now not to have that for the kiddos. So can you share?
It's not too early to ask.
Can you share what's happening with that? Because I really feel for the students and the parents. I know that's a, you know, a very anxious transition.
It is. You're right. You're right. So we've had a lot of conversations about that. And rising sixth grade students and families have received communication from the middle school, including some things that we did because of remote learning that we want to continue. So the, the music department and the language department created really rich videos to show to the rising students to give them an idea of, of what their options are. And I think that's been really beneficial. I have not talked with, with parents about that. But it is definitely underway and we want to make sure families have the same communication they've had in the past, just perhaps in a different format. And I would encourage families to, to ask the, we'll start with the fifth grade classroom teachers if they have questions. But in addition to that, the, the data that we, that we always send up in terms of recommendations for classes and, and different data points for kids' learning, that's all been sent up. And so the, the receiving team at the middle school is working with that.
And is there any kind of video or like, this is your school and this is what it looks like? Because that could be a key, this is how your locker will look. And you get all of those things that I know cause a lot of anxiety. If there's some way to, I don't know, within the parameters we're working to, to help with that.
That's a good point. I know that the lockers are a big issue every year.
Because a lot of students have never been there, right?
Yeah. I, I don't know that it's gotten down to that level yet. But in the next four weeks, I'm, I'm hoping that anything that hasn't been captured so far will, will be relayed. And Scott Kellett and Stephen Roblesky have been great about communicating with us for the last couple of months, actually.
Yeah, I'm sure. I'm sure everybody is just reframing this in a, in a way. But I'm, I'm curious to hear how it all goes.
Brooke, if I may interrupt, Steve Bobleski is working on a video of Welcome to the Middle School.
Oh, great, okay.
It's under production and will be released as soon as it's ready. He does a great job, so.
Okay, that should help to alleviate some, some of the anxiety, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Oh, I just had one more question. Would you mind talking? Because I think, and some of the parents listening might be interested as well. So unfortunately with Cynthia retiring, that's obviously a huge loss. And I saw your update on the search. So bringing in an adjustment counselor versus a guidance counselor, what does that mean? And can you explain that to, maybe if you're not familiar with that terminology, why that's the case?
Sure. So for comfort's sake, I guess, for this audience, we, Cynthia Shapiro, who's been in place for, for a number of years, is a licensed guidance counselor and adjustment counselor. So in terms of what it actually look like, looks like and how it plays out with students and families, I, I don't anticipate there's going to be any obvious change. Adjustment counselors are very much like a social worker for schools. So Cynthia has always worked in that capacity, having a lot of contact, for example, with outside therapists as well as the families themselves. And so we wanted to make sure that we capture that piece in, in the new person that we bring in. And Kate McCarthy did a beautiful job leading that search. Deb and I both sat on that, as well as general education and special education teachers. And we're, we're excited to, to wrap that piece up. We will continue having the lunch bunches. We'll continue having that person work with the staff in the center. So we're really excited to, to keep all the energy going that's, that's been around that with Cynthia.
Okay, so in practice, it won't look any different as a position. It's different in, in name only.
Primarily in name. And, and you know, when, when that person's in position, I, I expect they'll, they'll bring their own special things to it, but no significant structural changes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Henry. Where did you go? I'm set. Thank you.
Thank you, Brooke.
No, Brooke, thank you very much. Those are great questions and it's good to hear those answers. Thank you. Mark or Leslie, do you have any questions or comments for Laura?
Maybe something quick, Henry?
Absolutely.
Thanks so much. And I'm excited that you're, one of your goals for next year is to actually apply some of the best learning from the remote learning experience you've had so far this year. I can say I've been blown away by what the chickering staff has done to reach out to students and support them. And it's been fun watching the assemblies. They're like, feels like the Muppet Show and Sesame Street, a lot of fun. And, and you know, I think the, the layout of the work that's expected for each week and the resources that are available has always been pretty easy for me to navigate anyway. And I know you're organizing a lot into that document, but the links right from the PDF have been a great way to, to streamline. So thank you.
Oh, good. Thank you so much. They have done an incredible job and it's required a lot of collaboration and a lot of time. I appreciate that. And the suggestions as well, we're continually trying to improve what we're doing.
Yep. Great. Leslie? I think you might be frozen, at least you are on my screen. I'll come back to you in a second, Leslie, if, if you're having technical difficulties. I know you did in the last call. Mark, great idea on the Muppets. I think Dr. Reinemann and Laura, you guys have the next theme in the assembly.
There we go.
I look forward to seeing the costumes.
I'm with the frogs, my hero, so I'm all set.
You know, I was struck when I was reading the principal's report how just the fact that we're talking about remote, remote learning and adding an item into the school improvement plan. And we're talking about where we were, what is it, like nine weeks ago at this point in going into Phase Three? I mean, if we thought about having remote learning as a major item in the principal's report or in shaping our school for years to come, six or seven months ago, I'm not so sure that would have been something that would have been high in our agenda at the time. So it's critical that we continue to think about these things. The buzzword that I like better than the new normal and, you know, working, you know, getting through this together type of stuff, I like the silver linings discussion. And there are a lot of silver linings that have come out of this. And what we can implement and what we can look at for future years, coming from this obviously crazy tragic event or pandemic is critical. So thank you for being focused on that. And again, all the educators, they've done a fantastic job to change quickly, get comfortable, get comfortable being uncomfortable and improving week over week. I know the students are improving week over week and getting used to it too. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Leslie, were you gonna, do you have anything you wanted to say?
Yes. I just wanted to reiterate that we are all so appreciative of everything the teachers have done, the faculty and staff. It is not a small task that you all have taken on. And it is, it's just amend, it's amazing and commendable. So thank you very much for your dedication.
Thank you. And I, I would be remiss if I didn't say that Deb Reinemann is amazing and will take the school really far next year. And I'm just really excited about, you know, meeting the students where they are, meeting the, meeting the teachers where they are and need to go and, and taking this wherever it needs, needs to go. So you're in great hands for sure.
Thank you. With that, we will move on to the warrant report.
Yes, so you have in your packet actually quite a long list since you haven't met since early March. But those are all the warrants that have been processed since the last time you met. And I want to thank both Leslie and Henry for working, working with us during this time where the town hall has been closed to make sure everything gets signed. So we do, we do appreciate that. And as you can see, we're keeping the bill paying going week to week. So that's, that's also good news.
That's critical. You know, we've made a commitment when this whole thing started to continue operating. Obviously, we've had continued guidance from the Board of Education and the Secretary and whatnot. But to take care of the people that take care of our children and take care of our facilities and take care of everything that goes with it and making sure when we do get to go back into our wonderful building, things are back to where they should be and people are there to help us is important. So you've kept a sharp focus on that. I know that includes a budget and everything else, but paying the bills is critical. So thanks, Don, for staying on that.
My pleasure here.
Staying with that, we'll move to the monthly financial. Just quickly, are there any warrant questions from the school committee? Sorry. Okay, moving on to the financial reports.
So as you know, I usually provide for you a rolling financial report so that you don't lose the variances that we've already mentioned. So I'm just going to highlight the new ones that you would have seen since our last meeting in, in March. Your last statements were as of February 28th. They're now presenting you financials as of May 14th. So I did the most recent that I could prior to your meeting to capture as much information as I could. On the payroll side, on the salary side, you know, we've been carrying a large variance and a large positive variance from the beginning of the school year due to several post fiscal year 20 budget staffing changes. We're adding to that tonight for you educator savings from realized extended maternity leaves and also some continued unfilled EA positions that have been coming and going. So it's not the same positions. We have just had a lot of change with maternity leaves and such in the EA realm also this year. We also know now that with the closing of school, we won't be incurring any additional substitute or most likely custodial overtime. So I've let both of those remaining balances fall into your positive variance analysis. So we're assuming we're not going to spend those monies. So the total projected salary savings at this point is about $210,000. And you will see how that fits in nicely when we talk about out of district because that's almost how much we, we exceeded the, the budget in out of district. So it puts us in a, in a fairly break even position for.
How did you manage that one, Don?
I know. It's almost.
Oh, the yuck!
I know, it's eerie. But things always fall, things always fall in the right direction, I think, when it comes to Dover. So where it's, it's one of the budgets that we, we enjoy managing. On the expenditure side, as you remember back in your April 27th joint meeting, you approved the amendment to your fiscal year 20 transportation contract to reduce the per diem. So Dover is realizing a savings of $34,800 on your regular ed transportation. In addition, we know we're going to have some savings on utilities. I actually just got your electricity bill and it really was about half of what it normally is. So add two months to that. We are seeing a little more activity in the buildings. But for that month where there was really no activity, the, the bill did go down in half. So I've increased our expected utility savings up to approximately $30,000. All in all, I think your operating expenditures will be probably at least $70,000 for fiscal year 20. But knowing that majority of that is really your transportation and your utilities. And we, we have typically a favorable heating oil variance because we, the town, and rightly so, has us budgeted a, a safe place, not knowing where oil prices are going to go. So it's more like the 250 range. And remember, we were about $2 a gallon this year. And then I'll share with you in our next report where we're, where we're looking, we're going to be for fiscal year 21. Again, you're out of district. I mean, the good news, bad news, the good news is that it hasn't really changed. So we've been, we've held steady in our placements, which leaves us really at the $210,000 negative variance. And your circuit breaker is going to be, we really know what that number is going to be for sure because they have already reimbursed us at the mandate at 75%. So your circuit breaker reimbursement is the number, the $1,152,623. So when you bring all those pieces of the puzzle together, there is a surplus that will be returning back to the town of a million, about a million two. So that's the circuit breaker at 100% plus a little bit of operating from, it varies from your operating budget. So that'll be good news to the town warrant committee and the town administrator.
And as a reminder, with the circuit breaker, the town, we budget 100% and ask the town for 100%, right? And then not, not anticipating circuit breakers. So then whatever, we're not reliant on that for any way other than to pick up on something that might have been a miss or something that was a surprise. So therefore that town money goes back to the town, not to the school.
Exactly. And you can see the volatility and the sort of the reasoning why Dover does that way because it does protect the school budget on an annual basis for unexpected out of district placements. And so it's actually puts you in a really good position that we don't have to worry about ever trying to manage an out of district negative variance with your, with your in-house, your in-district operating budget. So it's a luxury that the town affords us.
John? How, speaking of out of, unanticipated out of district, how are we placed with unanticipated school reopening COVID expenditures and everything that we're going to have to potentially? And it could get very expensive if we need to purchase items. And so how is that going to work in terms of budgeting?
So we do know there's both federal and state monies that are being allocated towards the FEMA and the MEMA, you'll hear. So they are looking to help cover some of the additional expenses that schools will have to do, schools and towns. In addition, we, there's the CARES Act and you'll hear about the CARES Act. So part of the CARES Act is to immediately give school districts about 80% of what you normally get in your Title I allocation. And that's also to sort of be a COVID-19 stopgap. We don't need to use it this year, but you have, some school districts have the option of bringing that money in fiscal year 20 if they're having shortfalls, but also to put it towards fiscal year 21 for unexpected expenses to deal with COVID-19, such things. And they're being very broad in how you use it. They're looking at use technology, if you need to get more technology, some of the things that you need to operate your school. So being fairly flexible to allow the school districts ways to make all this work. But, but the biggest thing, if we do incur large cost, we have the, the federal emergency and the Massachusetts emergency grants that we can apply for and be reimbursed a portion of that.
Okay, but we don't know what portion or how that's allocated or.
No, it's usually a pool of money. And so it depends on how many, what the application process is like and how much money is applied for. I've done it once here in this seat. If you remember, the really bad snowstorm we had, I want to say it's in 2014 or 15.
Yeah.
We, the region actually applied for a FEMA grant for snow removal because it was so extensive. So it is a long process and it usually takes a while to see the monies. But it is a, a process that works. And I think, given that this was a national issue, obviously there are funds as you, in all these stimulus bills that are going to help fund everyone to take care of the, these issues. We don't really know where we're going to land because we're still trying to figure out what the protocols are going to be. So we've, we've definitely started brainstorming here and trying to get ahead of the supply.
Right.
But we also don't want to jump the gun and inefficiently spend money that maybe they come up with an alternative for. So we're, we're being very cautious, but also making sure we're in a good position.
Okay, I appreciate that. So I know it's a moving target. I just, is it something that we need, needs to keep us up at night at this point? Are we going to just keep revisiting it as we?
Yeah, no. And I think, you know, definitely being in the Dover Sherburne realm, all the school districts have some revolving funds if we ever ran into some issues. Both, you both, all three school districts have building funds, building revolving funds that are accessible, monies that we can draw upon if we need for situations like this. So I certainly wouldn't sleeve, lose sleep over it. It's more of depending on what, what they come up with, the plan, being able to get the materials if everyone is trying to get the material. So that's more of my concern versus being able to expedite it from an expenditure standpoint. But that's why we're trying to sort of be ahead of the game a little bit and seeing where, you know, we can get people lined up or things on order. We've already started ordering a few things that we think we're going to need. We're definitely, talk about that every day.
Okay, I know. I appreciate it. Thank you.
My pleasure. Yeah. It's a concern.
Yeah, thanks so much.
Before we move on to Don's capital update, anything more on operating? Okay.
So what I tried to do was just give you a little bit of update on your fiscal 21 budget and both on the capital and the operating side. So on the capital, as you know, that the town of Dover has postponed their annual meeting until late June, even given the possibility that, you know, there, maybe they wouldn't even have that. So given that, we've decided to postpone the scheduled floor work. Remember, we were going to do the upstairs and downstairs lobbies. postpone the scheduled floor work. Remember, we were going to do the upstairs and downstairs lobbies. In order to be able to make that work happen, we sort of already need to know so we can get it lined up and get the supplies. And I think, given everything that we may, other things we may have going on this summer, it's probably best to just push that off. So we'll wait for the town to approve that capital project. And then we will work with our contractor to see if there's any other opportunities to schedule this before next summer. But I think we know that there are not any safety issues with the floor. It's just that it's exceeded its useful life and it needs to be replaced, but it's not going to cause any issues if we have to wait one more year. And I just think with everything that's going on, that's probably the prudent thing to do. So we have made that decision.
Quickly on that, Don, and that makes sense. And forgive me, I don't carry around the onsite insight report with me, but was that originally stated for this year or have we already moved that before? Or where did that fall?
Yeah, it was in the range, right? They, they sort of put that in the range. So we've, because of how well our floors have held up, we haven't had any buckling or anything. We have to push that out a year.
Okay.
Now it was really is sort of probably two years past. But I think that we find that the way we maintain our buildings, we're able to push things beyond what onsite insight report has because they're using a national industry standards for useful life versus how you may take care of your assets. And we find that across all of our, all three school districts that we use onsite insight as our roadmap, but more than likely in the majority of the items, we are actually pushing out past the years where they show up on onsite insight. But at least it gives us a tracking mechanism to make sure it comes up on our radar to start looking at it on a serious basis.
Good. Thank you.
The, the other project that's listed on your capital that wasn't going before the town was the playground flooring. And so that is one thing that given status that we're in with no one on the school grounds, we've actually been able to move that up and are looking to have that done in early June. The, as I said, the funding from that is coming from school committee available funds and also some outside funds. And we did hear just recently that the PTO has committed at least $5,000 to this project. And that will be a gift that we'll bring forward to the school committee in June for your acceptance. Yes, very, very pleased with that. And I think both Brooke and Mark for putting together the project plan and then describing to them exactly what we're, have been trying to do for numerous years. So we're really excited about this project moving forward. We're just waiting for the deposit check to be issued from the town of Dover, which will then trigger the materials to be ordered, which will then give us a two week lead to have them on site. If you actually go by the playground, you will see that we've already replaced some of the borders, the timber borders that has sort of started to disintegrate. So that prep work has already been performed and is ready for the team to come out and do the recapping, as they call it, of the floor. And it will be both the bigger playground area and the swings that area. So we're excited to sort of get that facelift. That is much needed facelift. You'll notice there's a lot of holes and deterioration on that floor. Again, that's one of those projects that it probably has about a 15, 15 year useful life that flooring and we pushed it almost 20. But again, I think that's a good use of our assets to get as much as we can out of an asset before we jump in and replace it. The remaining capital item is just the core switch. Obviously that's a technology item and is, and once town meeting approval has taken place, Anthony will move forward with that purchase. Any questions on the capital update?
Well, thank you, Mark and Brooke.
Yeah, great. Thank you to the PTO. Much appreciated.
Exactly.
It's going to look great.
On the operating budget, just went to highlight, we have had your tech heating oil bid process and that was actually a Zoom bid opening. So that was quite fun to experience. And we have locked in for next fiscal year, oil, heating oil price of $1.47 a gallon. So you will, I can already tell you, you will have a positive variance in your heating oil line item next year without even knowing what's going to happen. Given that that's the price and that we have secured for the next fiscal year. And also, as you were talking about the adjustment counselor in, in and, and what that, that role entails, we had, if you remember, when we added the point six adjustment counselor to the budget at the last version last year, we did include the point six as a adjustment counselor for the center as sort of a pilot to see exactly what kind of staffing we needed in that program. And I think with another year of experience, as I say here, and much discussion around best practices, it's been decided to move forward with a counseling piece covered by the schoolwide adjustment counselor, but making sure we have staff that is in the center full time. And so that's going to be made up of both an academic coordinator and a general education EA who will be working with the academic coordinator and going out to and serving students in the classrooms as needed. It's sort of following a little bit of the programming that we here have, we have here at the region and how it rolls out with the academic coordinator. And so I think after a couple of years of trying to see what works best, this is where Kate McCarthy and her group and with Deb and Laura's input feels that this is going to sort of fit the needs of the students. Remember, the one thing that we kept going back and forth on this was whether this was actually a program that needed an educator. Would it be a special education programming, program, which that was what that would entail? And we really think this needs to be a support for the whole school SEL support. And so this is probably the best setup for that. So we will move forward with using the funds that were in the budget for the point six FT adjustment counselor to cover the other pieces that we're looking for in the center. So I want to share this news with you. It doesn't have any budgetary impact, but when you start seeing, well, you saw Laura's report tonight and just how we're staffing this, I wanted to make sure the committee was aware of that change in how the funds were being used. So not how much funds, but how they were being used. And I'm sure there'll be many more things to report when we meet after the first, when hopefully one school opens, but trying to get ahead of things that we already know about to sort of set the stage for next year.
Thank you, Don. Anything else for Don? Wonderful. We have the proposed changes for the student handbook, the first read in June, our June meeting, which is on the ninth. I believe will be action required. So to review the changes in the handbook, it's in your packet. I'm not sure who's prepared to sort of give an overview on that.
What do we do if we had questions about that? Who should Laura or Deb, who should we reach out to for explanation or?
Usually Brooke, what we've done in the past is on any of the first reads is have you guys take a look at it? I mean, if somebody caught something and they wanted to bring it up, there's nothing precluding you from doing that. But usually because there's still another three, four weeks until the next time you meet and do your final read. If you pass that concern along to Henry, he gets it to me and I get it to Laura.
Yeah, not really concern necessarily, just a question in terms of why some verbiage is that type of thing.
You could probably ask that now if you
Yeah, I was going to say, I mean, Laura, if you want to, you did a great job laying out sort of what's current and then what's proposed. A, Brooke might have an item, but if there's a couple of highlights you'd like to touch on, this would make, might be a nice opportunity.
Sure. I'm happy to do that. I'm just pulling it up here. So on, on cell phones and electronics, what was in there before was outdated. It was talking about potential problems with the sound of phones going off in the classroom. And that's not the problem that we're dealing with these days. It's, it's more about accessing the web on personal devices, which may or may not be a phone. It could be a watch. So just the technology, even the last couple of years has shifted enough that some of the concerns we're dealing with have also shifted. So we're trying to give ourselves a different kind of approach in, in dealing with those programs and those problems and supporting students and families to, to work through those. So that was the piece on that. And I certainly would love to hear from you if I'm, if I'm not hitting on, on the right points here. Field trips, we wanted to make sure that since we're setting those up for an educational opportunity that we're able to provide that. We've had certain situations where we haven't been able to provide the full experience we wanted to because of how some of the parent support worked. So we have some changes there. And in the attendance, we wanted to make sure that everybody who typically works with a child is informed about any kind of long-term absences, that it doesn't just go to the front office, for example, so that we can make sure that the child is supported. And then with arrival and dismissal, some changes in, in how we dismiss students if they're riding bicycles and some clarification in, in a two hour delay, which is, which is typical if we need to have any kind of delay there. And then bus expectations, there, there are, there's a wide range of things that we deal with on the bus that, that Deb in particular deals with on the bus and we often do communicate with families and tend to err on the side of over communication, but not necessarily every, every little thing. And so we just wanted to make sure we had our administrator discretion there for making that decision. So is, is there anything else that I didn't touch upon that I can help with?
No, I'm sorry. I, I think it was the cell phone and electronics piece that I was particularly, I know is a hot, hot button topic and I just was interested, I guess, during, in the change in language from at, during the school day to at school. And I don't want to necessarily parse this out right now. So I just, you know, I'm happy to reach out with questions about, I'm sure a lot of thought has gone into how it is worded.
So I just Part of that is because our, our school day is, is quite large. So for example, some people may or may not consider precess or recess before the school day as, as part of the school day technically. Similarly with bus rides to field trips or, or the bus ride on, on a daily basis or any kind of after school activity. We want students to know that they, they need to be following our, our protocols and our guidelines for their own safety. Whenever there is any kind of school environment, that it's not just when, when the, when the bell rings.
Okay.
Anything else? I think we're losing Leslie every now and again. She's been having technical difficulties from the last meeting. So when she jumps back on, I'll give her an opportunity to ask a question if she has one. But I know she, it looks like she dropped off right now. Thank you, Laura. Thank you, Deb, for both you guys working on that. Next item is really a progress update in a school improvement plan. You mentioned it in your principal's report. I don't know if there's anything else you want to touch on there. Obviously you mentioned the additional item. But if there's anything else on the improvement plan you want to touch on now, otherwise I believe we move forward with that in June as well.
I'm all set unless you have some questions.
No, not great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we move to the consent agenda, Dr. Kio, I'm going to put you on the spot quickly, but you know, you usually do a superintendent's report for us in the June, I mean, in the joint school committee meeting. Is there any sort of updates you have, would like to share with us while you have the opportunity with the Dover School Committee?
Yes, for sure. I mean, if it's okay with you, Henry, I know that you're privy to this, but our folks who are here were not in the last school committee meeting are not. So if it's okay with you, I'd like to talk a little bit about the, the planned task force.
I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Yep. So, so you know, given the, the uncertainty of our situation right now as a country and in Massachusetts and certainly in Dover and Sherburne, we really are uncertain about what the future holds for us in terms of schooling. And will we be open? What will it look like? What will it take for us to cross this threshold to, to have people feeling safe enough to send their children to school or to come to school as teachers? These are all very big questions and you know, if you were paying attention today, and I'm sure most folks were, the governor's, you know, his announcement today on this, this next stage of opening or reopening applied to manufacturing, to houses of worship and what was the third one?
Construction.
Construction, yes. So no mention of schools. And that's fine, but the problem is that we can't wait until August 20th to start thinking about what school's going to look like next year. And we don't know when we will get that guidance. So I doubt, I'm saying I'm picking August 20th randomly, but I, I doubt that that the state will wait that long to give us guidance, but just the same, we want to plan for multiple contingencies. So among those possibilities includes, you know, coming back regular school year. Just like we were prior to March 13th or coming back in some kind of hybrid model where we do some remote and some in-house brick and mortar education. But all of those things need to be thought through. And as I mentioned in, in the joint school committee meeting, attended a meeting last week with Ms. McCoy, international school leaders from, two from Germany, one from Denmark and one from South Korea. And heard about how they have reopened under these circumstances as they're a few months ahead of us in terms of their curves. And one place in particular, the International School of Copenhagen had an excellent website that I shared with the school committee members at the, at the joint meeting, which included our Dover School Committee members. Some really, really good ideas, but what we're planning to do is put together a reopening task force that would be made up of the leadership team, which represents all the leaders from our four schools in Dover and Sherburne and as well as a representative from the, the three school committees. The, the reopening task force would really serve as a steering committee and then be broken into subcommittees. The subcommittees right now, as I see it, would be, there'd be one related to facilities, one related to health and hygiene, instruction, transportation, the scheduling, our before and after school programming, our communications. And obviously something like instruction covers a wide swath of territory. There, that would include the remote learning. Any kind of assessment of how effective our remote learning has been thus far. And if we continued with remote learning, how can we improve upon it? Our SEL needs, our special education and ELL needs. That's a very broad category. So but we know we need to start having conversations about these things and, and we are doing that. So that's something that is unfortunately for those of us who like to take a break in the summer, it's, it can't wait. We're going to, we're going to be working on this through the summer. And you know, the communication piece that I mentioned means allowing families to know what we're thinking and giving them option, not options, but time, advanced notice of, of what we're thinking. Again, this is a moving target and I can't say that enough because because it really is. We don't know. Nobody knows where this is going. We could reopen this summer and have a second wave that kicks in the last week of August and gets worse as the school year goes on. I've heard people go as far as to say they don't believe schools will open next year. And on one extreme to the other extreme saying could be back in normal just with precautions. But there are a lot of things we need to think about with our facilities, making sure that kids, when they're entering the building are checked potentially. We, many places, certainly these schools opening in Europe, we're talking about the thermal thermometers on people's foreheads to make sure that nobody's coming in with a fever. Masks. Using different entrances. So there's not a lot of queuing up at the main entrance. Uh, masks, um, using different entrances, so there's not a lot of queuing up at the main entrance. Perhaps even um, staggering buses. How many people can ride a bus? How often will we clean the buildings? Do we need to separate or break up our classrooms uh, so that we can socially distance our students? All of these things are big, big, big considerations. So that's the, that would be the role of the um, the reopening uh, task force. And it is modeled in a way after the start times task force in order to address as many issues as possible. It's very much a moving target. If somebody says to me, yeah, but what are you gonna do about this? We don't know. So there's no need to ask at this point because we really don't know. Just, we have to work through it, but we will take it a step at a time and um, and will be thoughtful about it. And I think that's the key here is that we're getting out in front of it. We can't wait, like I said, until, you know, August twentieth. We need to be out in front of this curve. And I'm lucky because I have a great leadership team in this district and good school committee supporters. And um, together we will, we will um, make up this task force and we will consult stakeholders along the way or include stakeholders along the way. One of the questions came up was uh, in the last meeting, would we be surveying uh, people about what worked and what didn't? Staff, students, teachers, yes, those surveys will continue. Will we be assessing kids when they come back? We anticipate assessing kids for uh, their needs as they come back to school. So it's a really, really big topic, but um, I wanted people to know that that was going on. We have some Zoom meetings scheduled, we have a Zoom meeting scheduled. Um, Beth, can you help me with this? Cause I don't have the calendar in front of me. We have a Zoom meeting scheduled for parents this week, Wednesday, is it three o'clock?
Yes, Wednesday at three.
Wednesday at three o'clock, that's a K-12 Zoom meeting. You'll find those to be helpful. Um, one of the things that we're really focusing on right now is our end of the year planning. And making sure that, um, as Brooke mentioned, um, and Laura on this day out, we're discussing uh, you know, what kinds of festivities, if any, would we have as, as we close out the year. But also the logistics around collecting um, student belongings within the building and getting those to families. And arranging dates for that to happen in a, in a kind of socially distanced, um, socially distanced responsible way. Uh, so I know that the administration has already started some of that work, collecting students' belongings. But we want to make sure that we're doing that consistently across the best, uh, the district. Um, the two elementary schools would probably take a different approach than the middle school. And the middle school, a different approach than the high school. So we have some things to iron out in that regard. So we're meeting on those topics actually tomorrow. And uh, so information will be forthcoming. That's pretty much it for me.
Thank you, Dr. Keo. Uh, anything for school committee questions for Dr. Keo? Uh, the only thing I would say, and it's not a question, but it's a, a reminder. Um, and I, I picked this up from years on school committee. Anything that you need, that you think the school committee can help you with or support you, ask early and ask often. Um, the less surprises, the better. But um, and obviously, that's not easy to predict. But um, you know, Brooke brought up some great questions earlier about preparing and supplies and what do we need? Um, obviously, budget is an important role in the school committee. Um, and anything that you can uh, need from us to help in any way, um, don't be shy and make sure that you just let us know early. So we have time to think about it and those type of things. But um, you know, we're here for you guys and we appreciate everything that's done.
Well, thank, thank you, Henry. And um, you know, just to that end, people send me things um, all the time that they pick up here, there, or wherever, uh, on these topics. It's helpful to me. I don't always necessarily read it on the spot, but I, I scan it and tuck it away for when I'm sitting down around the table with other people about looking at uh, possible options for us. So, you know, that's one way people can always be helpful. If you see something interesting out there, shoot it over, I'm interested. Uh, because this will be, uh, this will be a big undertaking. But uh, we're lucky in, in Dover and Sherburne. We have excellent leadership in these two communities, uh, in the governing side and as well as in the schools. And we will get there. And uh, we will definitely get there and um, you know, the kids will come first in the safety of our staff and students.
Thank you. And the next uh, item for the agenda is our consent agenda where we um, look to approve minutes from our meeting on March fifth and March twenty-eighth. Um, I would ask, do I have a motion uh, to approve the minutes as presented in our packet for, for uh, our meeting on March fifth and April twenty-eighth? I don't know if that was a uh, a motion approved, but um, it sounds like that might have came from the Leon household.
Yes, that came from us.
I thought we got Zoom-jacked. Zoom bombed.
I moved motion.
All right, can you, to follow proper protocol, I didn't hear you say your name, I apologize.
Leslie Leon.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, do I have a second?
Mark Healy, seconded.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll go through a roll. Um, Brooke?
Brooke Manries, yes.
Mark?
Mark Healy, yes.
Leslie and company?
Yes, Leslie Leon, yes.
Thank you. And Henry Spalding is a yes. Uh, further, you, there's communications for uh, your review from the regional school committee meetings and the Sherburne School Committee meetings. It happened in January, February and March. Uh, please take a look at those. And unless there's any further business that anyone wants to bring up, we will adjourn. Our next meeting is scheduled for June sixth. I'll probably shoot for an earlier time just to keep things moving. Uh, there'll be information forthcoming on that. Uh, again, thank you, everybody. Thank you uh, for all the educators, all the district leadership. We continue to move forward and um, we get better at this every single week. So I appreciate everyone's time and effort and everyone be safe and be well.
Yeah.
Thank you, Henry.